This is City Bavenon State's Georgia Board of Mayor Commissioners in July 10th. It is now five fifty-two. This is our work session. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have an agenda before us to have a motion to adopt. That was Lisa, do I have second?
Second.
That was Grandma in favor, say hi. Okay. First item of discussion is number three, continued discussion on traffic calming. Mr. Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Elmore. So, couple of things. One, following the last conversation that we had about this project and work session, we have incorporated feedback from each of you and the public and made some adjustments to the plan which Shannon will speak to in a minute. But first, I kind of want to set some context for why we are here. For decades, people have raised questions and concerns about speeding throughout the city. And while all of our studies that we've done, and there are many, over the course of time, have suggested that the overwhelming majority of the flow of traffic throughout the residential area is not in violation of speeding laws, meaning that, you know, and we saw this with both our Clarendon and Kensington studies last year, which reflected that, you know, the eighty-fifth percentile are actually going slower than the posted speed limit. I want to say, even though we don't have a speeding problem per se, what we're trying to address here is the very real perception of pedestrians and cyclists who believe the cars traveling at the speeds they are, regardless of whether it's in violation of the law, are still traveling too fast for comfort and safety. So, in response to that, and the very real concern that because of the construction going on on two seventy-eight, that motorists will use their own detours through our residential neighborhood to get around those roadblocks, we felt like this was the appropriate time to bring recommendations to the BOMC. Now, you know, based on the feedback we've received, we know there are kind of like two factions. One, who says, hey, vehicle traffic's moving too fast for our liking. We walk all the time. We walk our dogs. We walk with our small children. It's dangerous out there. Let's see if we can't calm the traffic. And then there's another faction who is very much like, quit impeding my ability to get through this city quickly. So, because of that, and the fact that, you know, we can't, it's impossible for us to please everyone in this scenario. Staff has to work with Mark Elliott Lord X Sergeant to develop what we believe are good temporary solutions that we can kind of use in a trial and error format to see what is most effective and if something we try is not effective, then we can easily remove it. Alright, so it's the recommendation setup to test. And as such, I think our discussion, or y'all's discussion, should be placed in the context of trying things out rather than this being a permanent decision which will, you know, alter the flow of traffic for the foreseeable future. So, I just want to provide that context so that, you know, we're understanding what we're bringing forward to you. And so that being said, I'd like to invite Shannon up to talk about, you know, some of that feedback that we've received and potential tweaks we can make to the original plan to satisfy some concerns that we've heard from the public.
Patrick really summarized this pretty well. And so, I mean, he's addressed what we're trying to do. Again, temporarily, what we, what we as a staff and as a team have done is we've gone back through the plan and looked for some compromises, some places where maybe we can pull back and not move, use some other materials to try to find a kind of a happy medium. I'm going to walk over here. Actually, do you have the, do you have the, over, actually, can I borrow one of you to bring this up so the folks over here can see? What we've really done is, pretty simple, on the materials that you have, you'll see that we've taken out some stop signs, taken out some chicanes, and substituted out some of the wave delineators for turtles. Trying to think how to describe turtle. Bumps with, bumps with reflectors on them. And so, just some other ways to maybe reduce some of the, we pulled back on some of the visual cues. I mean, we don't want to eliminate visual cues because that's how people think to slow down. But we've kind of dialed some of that back. So, just to point out, if you can flip through, Karina, that would be super helpful. Keep going. I can see it here, but I can hardly see it there. You'll see as we've gone through, we've eliminated the stop sign, for example, the first one that you come off of South Avenue. Part of that is, if you actually go out there and you can see the striping on the road of how narrow that will actually be, we're kind of tightening that up pretty good. That's pretty tight there. So, I think unlike the way it's designed today, where you really, there's no stopping. You just keep on going. This will, this will really be a much calmer and you're going to have to make your way through this. You're not going to be able to just hit the gas. We've eliminated the post-stop sign. People have said, oh, we're concerned about the safety. That we agree. We've eliminated that. As we've gone, keep on going down the first set of, or the the second set of what we call chicanes. Chicanes, just first of all, between the chicanes, it's twenty-two feet. So, I've heard some really, some misunderstanding where somebody thinks it's going to be a one-way road and that you're going to have to have one person go this way and one, it's still twenty-two feet all the way through. A travel lane on the highway is ten feet. A traditional lane on most roads would be eleven feet. The biggest road you typically would see would be twelve feet. So, when we're twenty-two feet, it's not like you don't have any road. So, these, these are used in in communities all over the place for this very purpose, to really signal to drivers, pay attention, I'm here, you know, and that's what they're designed for. Again, in our case, I mean, some, in many communities, you'll see them planted with curbs. So, they're permanent fixtures. That's not where we are right now. Where we are right now is using paved reflectors, turtles, some wave layers, some, you know, reflective bars, just to see how it's going to work and whether this is the right solution for this community. And if I have, I'm looking back at reports, ten, fifteen years, the same answer. And so, this is a possibility on how we can try to address the thing that keeps coming up. So, as you keep on going through, and in the materials, and you do have these, and they're all posted online, correct, Karina? You'll see we've put Xs through things that are getting kind of innate. We've already, I think I already mentioned that. And it's, yeah, so again, as you come back, you'll see where, on this next set of slides, where we're eliminating places where we either think they're not necessary, that, like, another set of chicanes and some of the stop signs. So, we've looked very closely at, okay, what is the distance from this street to this street? Because if it's really short, we probably don't need anything. If it's long, then we start thinking about, okay, what do we need to do? So, that's, you know, we've just modified this in order to try to find a happy medium that allows us to both continue to achieve the objectives that we stated and said we wanted to achieve or task and not overdo it. Then the only other thing that I think is really, meaning, we can, you know, kind of flip through these, but the the only other thing that I might continue to note is the Kensington, or the traffic circle, because there's a lot of misunderstanding. The first plan that we put out closed off part of the traveling to try to change the way traffic would flow. We are not doing that. We are, the circle itself remains the way it is today. We are not changing that. What we've done, and you can see this in the plans, we're using paint to try to close in that visual, that visual cue so that if you're supposed to be one car going around, you're one car and the width is for one car. What we've seen in observation is that people were confused, that this, there's so much pavement out there that people are going the wrong way on the circle, or cutting it off, or doing other kinds of things. The other thing about traffic circles is, traffic circles are really good at moving cars through. It may be a modest pace, but they don't stop. I mean, anybody that's ever tried to cross the street as a pedestrian with a, with a traffic circle knows that, you know, this is fodder. So, this is fodder. Jump, jump, jump. And so, what we've, you know, this, the reason we have stop signs and not yield signs is because we're trying, you know, not to introduce fodder. So, that's, that's kind of where that is. And those are changes from the initial plan, and sometimes there's confusion. The stop signs can move to different locations. The last, the last meeting, we talked about where they are. These were put in this location, and now I know why. And the reason is because they're in grass and they're easier and less expensive to install there than if we have to put them in the concrete. But we'll probably move them to the concrete. So, that's the only reason they were shown in that capacity is because it's a whole lot cheaper to do it that way, but it's not that big a deal. In, I mean, you know, in the scheme of things.
Shannon, if you'll allow me to interject too. Something I failed to mention at the beginning of this conversation is that the eventual result of this discussion will actually culminate in needing a resolution from you guys to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of executing whatever plan we finalize.
Christian, boy, anything you think I missed that should be said on the plans itself? Go ahead.
Well, I just want to say, I mean, I appreciate the approach here that, you know, we're trying some stuff out to see if it works. And I appreciate the process. You know, we had some, you know, good public meeting or two. You've moved a lot of us and taken that in hood. We've received this this evening, so I appreciate the process. And, you know, I like, like it.
I just have a few little things. I've noticed the barrels over by Carl's Corner and how tight that's going to be. I think that's really good because you really do have to slow down to turn yourself in there. And it's no longer just that quick little race car drive into the city right there. So, I think with that turn, that removing that stop sign there, that should be fine because you really do have to slow down there. And the second thing I'd say is, a lot of people have told me, or I've heard, you know, they, they don't like the traffic circle because of the stop signs and that they should be yield signs. And I, the way I frame it in my head and I've tried to explain is, it's a circle, yes, but it's not a traffic circle designed to move traffic. It's a circle that's a very nice aesthetic thing in our neighborhood. And we have a beautiful piece of land in the middle that is well-attended to, and it's not meant to move cars through there like a traffic circle on, you know, like, like at Emery with the traffic. So, it's just, that's just not what it is. So, it's an intersection and the stop signs are fully appropriate for what we're trying to do there. So, I know that's what you guys think too, but I thought it was, was worth saying that it's, it's not really a traffic circle. It's just an intersection with a nice. But thank you, guys. I really like it. And I'm, I'm in favor. I'm excited to see what it can be for us.
Mr. Speaker?
It's good to see how it works because there's definitely, and I like trying new things because there's other parts of the city that I think could benefit from measures such as this as well, you know, perhaps Clarendon. And so, I'm excited to see how all that works, see if it works. And then you can go. I like how we're not going to just, you know, spend all this money and then come to find out later on that it's not not feasible to continue or because it doesn't work or if it's too expensive to maintain. So, this is good.
Yeah, so, you know, thank you for this. You know, none of this has changed my thoughts about it from last time. I think it's a good thing we're doing. The question that I have though is, as you stated in the beginning, we don't have data showing that there's, you know, anything outside, or, you know, anything to worry about outside of legal speed limits and it's more a perception thing. My question is this, we are doing this temporarily to see if it works. How do we know if it works?
We've been asked to look, and we are trying to figure out how we will use some of our existing data, see if we can measure some of it's going to be kind of perception and how, what kind of reports we get back from people about whether they're seeing a difference. We are looking, we will use, police will use, you know, other ways of doing survey and observation. But I'm going to admit to you that we're still figuring out how we're going to actually quantify that in, in a way that can help us understand it.
Thank you.
One of the ways that I think we'll be able to quantify whether or not it's a success has nothing to do with speed and everything to do with the amount of traffic that is using the residential area as a detour. So, if we're slowing down residential traffic, it, in theory, will encourage fewer cars to take that as a detour. So, that's another, I know it's not the end-all-be-all, but that's another observational approach.
Right, no, I mean, so, you know, in addition to the goal of calming traffic, there's also a goal of diminishing traffic.
That's correct.
Yeah, so.
But they're going to be here.
I just want to know, you know, how do we know? That's all.
Do you think we know existing speeds? So, if we're trying to reduce speeds, then we can run additional.
Do we know existing?
Obviously, we've done it on other, we did this on Ken.
I'm asking if we know how many.
Yes, we can, we do know numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, that was one of my questions about evaluation. So, the traffic circle. Last time, we talked a little bit about a crosswalk on the Lake Shore Drive, the northern part of Lake Shore Drive. I don't know if that's still a consideration.
It's just not on there, right?
Well, Mark said it was because it was a one.
It's a one-way.
And so, but he was like, there's no issue with adding it.
Well, yeah, I, I think it would still work. You'd just have to go all the way around to stay on the crosswalks. But either way, I just thought I'd mention it. You know, as a commissioner, one of the number-one things I have heard for years is about traffic, about this, and maybe it's perception. I mean, I'm sure people do see the occasional person who's really speeding and, you know, people running stop signs and all of that. But this perception that people are going too fast for safety. And the other thing I will say is that people are on our streets, not just our sidewalks. They're on our streets. They're biking, they're walking, they're running. If I run and walk or bike almost every day through our neighborhood, and there are so many people out, you know? I mean, if someone's walking their dog on the sidewalk and someone else has a baby, you know, people are in the street. So, I think that's where a lot of this perception is starting to come from, is that people just fly even when there's someone walking along the edge of the curb. And I really hope that this will start to address it. I love that it's not permanent. I will say that, you know, we are hearing a lot out there about, why can't we just put more police out there? This is not something we can control through policing because police can only be in one place at a time or a couple of places at a time. There's no way that they're going to be able to really thoroughly control people, getting people to slow down, not to speak of the fact that we can't even ticket unless they're going ten miles over the speed limit. So, I mean, that, we're talking about thirty-six miles per hour before you can even issue a ticket. I think traffic calming is our best bet, and I think the evidence that is out there that a lot of cities are doing the exact same thing because they've come to the exact same conclusion. I too wish we could do it in some of our other areas. So, I'm excited about this as a test case. I'm really glad that two seventy-eight, that we're able to implement something with two seventy-eight. I think that gives us a great opportunity to start to look at some of this and hopefully expand it into other problematic areas if we find things that really work well. So, I'm in favor.
I just have one more. This is sticking in my head now. I really would like to see how we're going to understand whether it works before voting for this. Thank you.
Well, I meant to add, I do really like all the parking, additional like golf cart parking and bike parking. I thought the two ovals, as I call them, I think that's really clever and will encourage people. It just, I think, you know, businesses, you know, giving those golf carts a place to park and close it off that cut through there. So, anyway, and I would just say that a lot of the moves that have been made here are just based on, you know, best practice that have worked in other cities. So, that's where a lot of the moves are coming from, I would say. Is that correct?
That is absolutely accurate.
So, this is just based on what works in other places. So, anyway.
Yeah, we're not coming up with these ideas. I want to add one other thing that we have been able to negotiate as a part of the sewer replacement project that is also ongoing in our city right now. The trail or the pathway between Berkeley and Banbury Cross is going to be turned into a cart, bike, pedestrian-friendly pathway on a permanent basis. For right-of-way access issues, the county said that they would build that for us because they needed it for the project itself. So, that's another, you know, measure that we're taking to improve other modes of traffic throughout the residential area. And it's free.
And could they do that at the end of Berkeley as well? That'd be great. Okay, no, I saw that the other day. I was like, oh, that's awesome. Very good. Thank you. I was like, that was a great little surprise. So, it's awesome. Anyway, I'm good. Any questions, comments up here, Commissioner? Okay. Thank you. My great work.
Thanks for all the, and quick work. Thank you so much.
So, all right, if we're done with that one, Mr. Manager, item number four, I think that's yours.
Indeed. So, we've discussed at length the age of our Public Works vehicle fleet. Two of our work haulers are well beyond their useful life. I mean, one F-150 is a two thousand, the other F-150 is a two thousand and five. And so, we place money in the capital program this year for vehicle replacement for Public Works. We are proposing replacing two F-150s with an Explorer and a Maverick. These would be the last vehicles that we intend to purchase that would not be electric. The Maverick is, is going to be a hauler or kind of a yard race disposal annex vehicle, also for use in stormwater inspection. We obtained quotes for each of these models from three different Ford dealerships as neither of these models are part of the state bid program. They aren't on that program. So, we had to quote them out or bid them out. Interestingly enough, the courtesy Ford provided the low bid on each of the vehicles. So, for the Explorer, we, we would have a total MSRP of forty-seven, five seventy. And for the Maverick, if you'll just bear with me, let's pull it back up. Of course. One second. Somehow. Got it. The Maverick has a total MSRP of twenty-eight thousand, two thirty. So, the total cost of these two vehicles are well within the amount budgeted for in the capital program. Also, we need to move on these because of the fact that the money that is programmed in the capital program is our ARPA funds, which need to be contracted for use by the end of this year. They don't have to necessarily be spent, but contracted for use. So, the quicker we can spend our ARPA funds, the better. And that's why we're going ahead and moving forward with these. Also, our Public Works Department is exploring a kind of a grand auction via GovDeals for not only these vehicles, but the garbage truck fleet that we, we also need to dispose of. So, the intention being that, once those sell, those funds will go back into the general fund and then we will recommend an appropriation of those funds back into the capital fund for additional capital need. So, that's, that's our approach, and we intend to bring this before you at the next meeting.
Okay. So, we will be voting on this on the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I meant to follow up on the previous item. What is the follow-up on that item?
Well, if, if everybody is good with moving forward with the proposed plan, we anticipate the cost of all of those measures to be in the ballpark of a hundred thousand dollars. We can't give you an exact cost because it's multiple contracts. So, we would ask for you to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars within the capital program using savings that we have on other projects to provide for the resources we will need to implement this plan. On that note, we received news yesterday that we were awarded another three nineteen grand for the Dunwick Drive stormwater project for a hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, which will further reduce the cost of that project, which was already reduced through engineering.
Can you say that number again?
It's a hundred ninety-eight thousand and some change.
That's fabulous.
Yes. Our two thousand twenty-four grant hall has been quite impressive, and we hope, we hope it doesn't end here.
But, so we, we could potentially vote on the traffic calming funds on the twenty-fourth?
Correct, appropriating the funds.
Okay.
And you don't even necessarily have to have the plan finalized by then to appropriate the funds, but we do need to appropriate the funds into the capital program.
Like, it's folks another two weeks to give us in.
Absolutely.
So, I'm good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. So, item number five, public comment.
Oh, wait, we aren't commenting on both.
You're right. We didn't. Sorry.
Right, I, I had a couple of questions about it. So, I am, you know, I'm happy to hear that this will be our last investment in non-electric vehicles. My question is, well, two. One, why not an F-150 Lightning, which is an electric vehicle?
Right, so, so we are, there's a couple of reasons for this. There's no charging infrastructure at the Public Works facility. And there's not as, it's not as easy to tie in access for charging as it, at the Public Works facility as it would have been here. So, that's more of a cost. At the Public Works facility as it would have been here, so that's more of a cost. We really need these vehicles now, um, so, uh, and we didn't have money budgeted for the uh installation of. Charging infrastructure at the Public Works facility, um, and. We believe that we could uh save resources for other purchases by utilizing a smaller. Uh, pickup truck than an F one fifty, um, so the decision was to recommend the Maverick. Gas-powered Maverick over the electric F one fifty uh to save the city approximately uh seventy-five thousand dollars.
And did we explore a hybrid option as well?
We, we, we did not explore hybrid options, because we actually wanna move away from the hybrid. Uh, model and straight to an EV model. Um, we have found that the Ford hybrid fleet. Um, has a. A lot more uh maintenance cost associated with it than the, than the Ford EV fleet. Uh, so we would rather transition to EV vehicles rather than do a kind of a half step.
Thank you.
Or any other questions? The, the sale of the, um, you said that sell the old uh vehicles are gonna go into capital projects, is that?
So that goes directly into the general fund, so any money we receive goes into the general fund unless it's already previously restricted. Um, however, once it hits the general fund, then you guys have the opportunity to appropriate those funds. To another fund for capital use, and that's what we would suggest.
Any others? Okay, hi. Now we're moving to public comment. Yes, sir.
Question or maybe more on traffic calming. Closest state limits, I'm not clear on what's happening. Uh, are you dropping the state limits? From whatever the existing limit is to what level?
Twenty, right? Twenty.
Okay, so that lowers the ability of our police to enforce the rules. Because of that ten mile an hour rule that the state has. Okay.
Dean Miriam, Egg Lake Place, a couple of things, uh, the Berkeley connection, I want to also. Support the thought of connecting the two Berkeley roads as part of the, the civil line. Construction work, and then uh on the traffic comment. Um, a couple of questions. So first, an observation, on the circle there at Lake, Lake Shore. Uh, I really think the stop signs need to be associated with the crosswalks. I think it'd be confusing to have them in the circle, so it sounds like you've already. Come to that decision. Um, the poster shows green streets coming down Lake Shore and Berkeley. Is that part of the project, or are we just dealing with Kensington at this point in time?
Yeah, um, we're, I'm calling it a pilot, that, that we're doing Kensington and South Almenel as a pilot. And then, but yeah, still bigger plan that was laid out showed uh green streets. In those quarters, because there are so many stormwater issues.
And I was unclear as to what the green streets make, but if, we don't need to get into that tonight, if that's not.
I think that's, that's much further down the road, uh, but something that um. I, I think that the design team really wanted to put forth that that was, that we could potentially address two issues at the same time. That if we were moving forward with traffic calming on those, that we could incorporate stormwater issues at the same time. Um, and address two problems.
And, and I absolutely agree with the devil's in the details, and I'd like to see.
Yeah, so we're not moving forward with that yet, and there are no details. You've seen all the details that are there, so.
The bridle path crosswalks, are they gonna be included in this first phase? Because that's not a high cost.
It is not a high cost, uh, it, some of them, we can, I think that's still, uh, those are things that we've kind of put on the maybe list. Um, kind of looking for some direction on those. We, we can put those on, but they're kind of in the maybe category right now.
Well, if I can make a vote for. Moving forward with those as soon as possible, because they'll affect some of that traffic at a very high cost.
Often, we're trying to avoid too many additional um. Crosswalks where we don't have existing handicap ramps. Existing handicap ramps, because we, we can do it temporarily, but we can't do it for very long before we.
You'll have to fix the curb, and that's gonna be a big cost.
Yes, so. We're trying to be mindful of the fact that each handicap ramp is about six thousand dollars, so that would be our budget really, really quick. So that's, that's really my, I did the reservation, okay, but I would like to urge that if the funds are available, to get as many as you can.
Thank you, I'm so excited to see the project moving forward.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, Bill Hoover, eighty-nine Berkeley Road, um. My comment uh about the, the, the traffic calming, um, maybe this is kind of. Technical, but uh I wondered if it would be possible to um. Uh, and maybe in some of the chicanes, uh, also include the, those little uh road dots or whatever that gives a little texture. Uh, so that uh people that uh decide to go a little wide would have that additional reminder other than the striping. And maybe also uh, uh, in the area of the, the, I guess what I would call the. Uh, South Almenel Plaza portion of South Almenel Plaza. Is uh near that parking for both the bikes and the, and the golf carts. Uh, maybe in some of that, uh, you know, striped out area includes some um. Uh, pedestrian uh walkway. Paint, uh, so that people that are actually using the, 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 the parking. Uh, know where to go uh to reach a crosswalk. Uh, and with regard to the um, the, the new vehicles. Um, I'm kind of what, it seems as though the, the Maverick. Isn't gonna have a lot of, of multiple use. It looks like it's more of a, of a, you know, a management vehicle that. Might be able to carry a, a little bit of yard waste, but I'm not seeing that it's really a, a, a hauling vehicle. Uh, either for, you know, people or um, uh, material, uh, because of its size and it's a crew cab. Um, and as far as the Explorer, I'm curious, is that intended as a, as a, a, a personnel vehicle? Um, because I'm not seeing it having a lot of dual utility, um, when it comes to. Um, the sorts of things I would expect the Public Works doing. I know in the, in the memorandum, it's mentioned to be. Um, you know, for travel, but it seems like um that um is a big chunk of money for. I'm not sure how much travel is actually occurring um for the, you know, the Public Works uh folks, but, I mean, I support replacing the vehicles, but. I'm just not really seeing that these are providing. Uh, the most utility for what I would expect the, the Public Works Department to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So someone else? I can't see the name, all right, any other? All right, seeing none, I'd like to bring it back. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That was mine, or do I have a second? Second, that was my call, if you ever say hi. All right, thanks, everybody, for being here this evening, we appreciate it.